Good morning. Welcome. As Erica said, we're always very excited on this day. The official swearing-in ceremony for 2020. And at this time, I would like to introduce Bishop Charles Duval. And we would ask that you stand and join us in the invocation. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, in Holy Scripture, you have given us a vision of a holy city in which the people of the world dwell in the harmony and peace of your loving presence. Behold and visit this city of Columbia, South Carolina, in which we now dwell. Renew the ties of mutual respect which form our civic life. Bless our city council with vision for the future and courage to act boldly for the common good. Strengthen our efforts to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and injustice. That peace and prosperity may prevail among us. May we all, no matter our backgrounds or present status, find in this city the fulfillment of our humanity and a sense of joy and peace. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Welcome. As Erica said, we're always very excited on this day. The official swearing-in ceremony for Councilman Howard Duval Jr., Councilman Edward H. McDowell Jr., and Councilman-elect William Brennan. So I've been through a few swearing-in ceremonies now, and I will say that I always feel a healthy sense of urgency and excitement about the work still to be done. But more so, there's a spirit in this place of renewal, energy, and hope for our city, particularly for these re-elected members of our council and our newest member of City Council. So, Councilman Duval and Allie Anne, Councilman McDowell, I don't see them now, and Jeannie, there they are, and Councilman-elect Brennan and Lauren. Congratulations. I am here on behalf of all of the 2,300 employees of the city of Columbia to assist you in any way that I can, and we're ready to work. So, good luck on your journey of public service. At this time, we will have remarks by the Honorable Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin.
It was amazing in politics and public service, you have to have at least someone in the crowd who will lead applause at the right time, and I'm always glad when Tamika takes on that responsibility. Thank you, Ms. Devine. It's always a serious and solemn and joyful occasion when we have the opportunity to induct and readmit the people's choice to public office in America. We do not take it lightly that this is indeed the greatest democratic nation in the history of the world, where the people have the opportunity, and I make the point to tell this to children every time I go and speak at a school, I've done over 250 or so schools since I've had the privilege of serving as mayor of the city, that America's not like every other country around the world, that we have the, not only the right, but the responsibility to participate in every single election that we possibly can and make sure our voices are heard, and that when people acquit themselves well, we bring them back to office. And when, maybe not so much, we tell them, "Thank you for your service." And we elect new people who represent the hopes and the dreams of our great city. Our city is a unique place, a capital city, the very first planned capital city in the United States of America. Not only born at the convex of the broad and saluted rivers of fertile soil that represent the Midlands of South Carolina, but we personified the government, the capital of this great state, since 1786. We are a historic in a way, in a number of ways in which we're very proud, in other ways that maybe we're not so very proud. We're the home of the very first Secession Convention. The challenges of the American experiment and the American South run through the veins of Columbia, South Carolina, and we have emerged from that as a city representative of, literally, we have residents from every one of the 194 sovereign nations of the world here. We are the home of Fort Jackson, where victory starts here. We're the home of two historically black colleges/universities, and the state's only Carnegie One Research University. A strong civil service buttressed by an incredibly vibrant chamber and business community here in the Midlands. We represent the future, not just of our own community, but of, I believe, the world. We represent them well right here in Columbia, South Carolina. In order for all that to work, we have to make sure we have sound, solid, public servants who are willing to work together to acquit the will of the people in a way that's thoughtful, that's judicious, that's cost-effective and responsible, that we take care of the people's purse. But we also push ourselves to think big about what we can be and how we can be. And we obviously are driven well by our faith. Bishop, thank you for that invocation. We had to go back and look at the, where'd the bishop go? Somewhere, oh, there it is, okay. I had to go back and look at the program to realize the invocation has to come at the beginning of the program, not halfway through the program. We're usually blessed in this chamber to have Reverend McDowell, not Councilman McDowell, but Reverend McDowell, bring the word. And if he's not with us that day, we have Councilman Duval fill in afterwards. He's never, Daniel, been judicious enough to ask the preacher's kid, Mr. Davis, to bring word. I'm not sure about that. I'm not sure what's behind that, but we'll figure that out someday. So we'll just plan to be on deck, okay, for service at some point. I will say this, because I do believe that this is a, it has been the privilege of my life, and I know for my colleagues on this council, for the men and women who work every single day to make sure that our collective vision becomes a reality, we take it as a solemn oath to execute the will of the people. And I will not venture too much into biblical lesson, as we have more than enough men and women of God in this chamber, Reverend. But I often think of the book of Isaiah, and Isaiah speaks of this vision, his dream of terrible majesty, when the heavens opened up, a host of angels and God himself were before him. Isaiah was awestruck and frightened. He cried out, "What was me, for I am undone? For I'm a man of unclean lips, and I dwell in the midst of a people of unclean lips, for my eyes have seen the King, the Lord of hosts." Isaiah was imperfect, frightened and afraid, standing before the full glory of heaven. When God asked, "Whom shall I send? Who will go for us?" Isaiah stood up. He dusted himself off, and he said, "Here am I. Send me. Here am I. Send me." I believe that even in this world in which we live, where partisanship has run amok, when we go in separate directions and things seem gridlocked in almost every level of government except local government, that it takes incredibly special men and women to stand up and say, "Here am I. Send me. I am willing to do the will of the people. I am willing to do what it takes to get things done, to bring people together, to speak, to love and grace and mercy and justice." It takes very special people, and that's why, on behalf of the people of this city, on behalf of my members, fellow members of City Council, Ed Howard, Will, we're so excited to be here with you and your families today. We're so excited. It takes a few moments to celebrate your election, and then, just in a few hours, we gotta get to work. We gotta get to work. So, God bless you. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations to your families. This is a family affair. We know it more than anything else, and we look forward to getting some great work done together. We're so efficient here. We don't have an emcee, so I think we're gonna go straight into the oath of office. Mr. Duval, I believe, is gonna be up first, and Counselor, Council, Counselor, Legal Counsel, Deputy Legal Counsel, Patrick Wright, is gonna officiate, and I'm not sure if Bishop Duval's or the family's gonna also participate, and we're gonna go on through the oath of office.
Raise your right hand and put your left hand on the back of your... Repeat after me. As a council member of the municipality of the city of Columbia, I will equally, fairly and impartially, to the best of my ability and skill, exercise the trust imposed in me, and I will, to the best of, use my best endeavors, to preserve the peace, and carry into effect, according to the law, the purposes for which I have been elected. So help me God. I do solemnly swear, and I will, I am duly qualified, according to the Constitution of this state, to exercise the duties of the office, to which I have been elected, and that I will, to the best of my abilities, discharge the duties thereof, and preserve, protect, and defend, the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So help me God.
Mayor Benjamin, members of council, newly-elected member of council, city manager, members of the staff, and friends. I want to thank all of you for the recent election, and I see many of you in the audience today that participated vitally in that election, and it means a lot to me to be able to continue to serve. It has been my great honor to have served the last four years on the Columbia City Council. I have worked in municipal government all of my adult life, on either the elected side or the administrative side. I have worked with and taught both municipal elected officials and the fine-appointed employees who make us elected officials look good. In the last four years, I've gotten to know many of our staff and the great employees of the city of Columbia. I can tell the citizens of the city of Columbia that we have a great staff that is better, as good or better than any municipal employees in the state of South Carolina. Our city manager has hired the brightest and the best, and they work hard to make our city worthy of being called the capital of the state of South Carolina, as the mayor just mentioned. I look forward to being with all of you during the next four years, and as the mayor said, "Here am I. Send me."
Now administering the oath to Councilman McDowell, we have the solicitor, Ernest Finney III.
As a council member of the municipality, of the city of Columbia, I will equally, fairly and impartially, to the best of my ability and skill, exercise the trust imposed in me, and I will use, my best endeavors, to preserve the peace, and carry into effect, according to law, the purposes for which I have been elected, so help me God. I do solemnly swear or affirm, that I am duly qualified, according to the Constitution of this state, to exercise the duties of the office, to which I have been elected, and that I will, to the best of my abilities, discharge the duties thereof, and preserve, protect, and defend, the Constitution of this state, and of the United States. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you, sir.
Just a word of thanks to our mayor, fellow members of the council. Thank you for your support. Thank you all for giving support and lending support. I must say to you unequivocally and unalterably, the first four years were amazing, plus they were insightful, and of course, there are several other adjectives I could, but I dare not to do that. We're not in executive session. I want to thank each of you, my colleagues, first of all, because of the civility that this council has embraced, because of the respect we have for each other. These last four years has been working, productive, good years, and I'm appreciative of that. And of course, to this staff, as Howard just said, you are the best staff. Amen. Somebody ought to say, "Amen." You are the best staff. You've assisted us, you've given to some of us who are newbies or were newbies, an indication of how things and things ought to work and should work, and we are thankful for that. And finally, I want to say that Columbia is the best city in South Carolina. Say what you will, Amay, with all of our imperfections, we have moved in a direction where growth, expansion, and relational needs in our cities are being emphasized, and for that, I'm grateful. What is a word that I could possibly use to close these few resounding remarks? I would simply say, "You ready, Will?" It's gonna be an interesting journey for each of us. And then I want to say thanks to my good friend, Chip Finney. Ms. Finney is here with us today. They've been friends of ours for the longest, and there's no other person that I would have asked other than my father, who is deceased. Thank you all so much. Let's put on, let's gird our loins. Let's put on, let's gird our loins for the journey and for that which is to come for the next four years. Thank you all so much. May God continue to bless each of us.
Thank you so much, Councilman McDowell. Now I will ask Councilman-elect William Brennan to join us. I believe he's gonna be sworn in by his father, James J. Brennan.
Oath of office. As a council member of the municipality of the City of Columbia, I will equally, fairly, and impartially to the best of my ability and skill exercise the trust reposed in me and I will use my best endeavors to preserve the peace I will use my best endeavors to reserve the peace and carry into effect according to the law the purposes for which I have been elected.
Let's devote that in half.
Okay. First half. And carry into law
and carry into law.
the purposes for which
the purposes for which
I have been elected
I have been elected.
so help me God
so help me God.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state
to exercise the duties of the office
to exercise the duties of the office
to which I have been elected
to which I have been elected
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
thereof
thereof
and preserve
and preserve
protect
protect
and defend
and defend
the Constitution of this state
and the Constitution of this state
and the United States so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations.
I'm not gonna force her to hug me in front of you all, so. What a wonderful day. Life, life is beautiful. Life is great. If you campaigned as long as we did, you reconnect with old friends, you meet new friends, you go to a lot of neighborhood association meetings, forums. You get out there, you get to know your wonderful city. And a lot of times, I would have the privilege, like I do today, to speak after my friend and new colleague, Reverend McDowell. And I think it was a, it was a, it was a Easter breakfast, and I had just, I had heard him speak so much, and he's a hard act to follow. So I went up to him at this breakfast, he was about to give the keynote, and I said, "Man, you gotta give me some tips, man. Your public speaking game is on fire." And he looked at me and he called me in close. He said, "Follow the KISS method." I turned my head, I said, "What, what is the KISS method?" "Keep it simple, stupid." Thompson, that's keep it simple silly for you, okay? So I'm gonna keep it simple. Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone that worked so hard on this long campaign, that got the message out for us, that worked so hard. To my wonderful wife, thank you so much. I love you so much. To my, to my parents, to my parents, wonderful role models, to my sister Katie and brother-in-law Mac, the beautiful family that y'all have. I really appreciate it. You know, the hard work on the campaign was nothing compared to the hard work that starts today. I realize that. I look forward to that. I look forward to working with my new colleagues on continuing to work on the basics, to build this foundation for us to reach the beautiful potential that this city has. If you, if you attended all those forums and neighborhood associations, you heard me say many times, the only reason City Council exists is to give you, the citizens of this wonderful city, the best quality of life. I look forward to serving District III in the City of Columbia and giving you that best quality of life. Thank you so much. Congratulations, Councilman Brennan. I might be the first person to say that. I feel pretty good about saying that. It's now official. We're gonna actually start having City Council meetings to be a half hour long as well, so hopefully we can be as efficient with your time. No, Teresa, it's not gonna happen. Don't look for it. We now have the pleasure of having our benediction by the Reverend Julius McDowell. Yes, there are two of them, y'all. If you hadn't figured it out yet, please, Reverend, please.
Good morning, beautiful people. We greet you in the name of Him who's able to stand up, the one who gives us strength daily. We bring you glory from one of the major cities in South Carolina, Charleston, South Carolina. My mayor, Teklin Bird, who is one of the best people that I've known, and I've been walking with your bishop in prayer and conversation about your city. We ask that you continue to strengthen Him daily as He continues to keep Columbia as number-one city in South Carolina. As soon as I get back to Charleston, I will call my mayor and say that I've been with Mayor Benjamin, and he invited me to come. You never swore me to come and celebrate with you. I am really upset, but I will ask him, and of course, he will answer. And I would say that this place is one of the cities that I loved, and I'm happy to be a part with my brother, and I'm happy to all of you to hear this, his oath. But he need to swear an oath to his brother. I need a little help. Somebody say amen. But then again, we are excited about here, and I'd like to thank the councilmen to be at my mother's funeral. I thank God for you for being a part of us. Mayor, we thank you, and you brought us so much happiness, so much joy, and I'm happy to be a part of Columbia family. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, this day is a wonderful day. We have been blessed with varied gifts and talents. You have blessed us with an inward motto, that when things are broken, we are going to repair it. When there is division, we are going to come and bring togetherness. We are going to keep you in front of us as we continue to celebrate of building this wonderful city. Oh God, we ask that you bless each member as they continue to go their different, their different places, to be able to stand tall, to be able to say that I've taken an oath, I've taken my vow to be able to do what you have asked for me to become. And most of all, oh God, cover, cover this mayor as he continues to go through situations in his life and be a part of this wonderful city. Just give him strength to be able to open his mouth and let you speak through him. Now, oh God, if it's your will, let the sweetness and the spirit of you to cover each one of us in the name who's able to keep us from falling. Let everybody say amen.